You're going to pull up my chair in the wrong way. When I go to sit down.
I think the same thing every single meeting today. In fact, I thought, I can rest now and don't have to worry about it because the hall is knocking.
Because I can, I always. Reach for me.
Well, last week you shoved it all over you and I'm like. Fell over the sun.
Do that again.
Okay.
What if you did?
Then it will get spinned on you.
What if you did him and I did you?
You're on, so. So you're on, Tom.
Good morning. We will call the county commissioners meeting to order. If you will, please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the April 5th meeting.
Mr. President, move to approve the minutes as presented. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Accounts payable vouchers.
Mr. President, I would move for approval of the accounts payable vouchers without exception for the period from August 7th to August 19th, 2024.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes. And payroll.
Mr. President, I'd move for approval of payroll for August 16th, 2024.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. All right. Highway. Morning, Stu.
Good morning. Just a few quick items. First item on the agenda is a right-of-way services contract with Lockmiller Group. This is for Bridges 80 and 83 out by West Point. This lets in January of '27, right-of-way services are not to exceed $173,590, and that is federally funded. We will be participating in 20% of that number.
Mr. President, I move that we approve this right-of-way service contract with the Lockmiller Group as stated.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes.
Okay. Our second item is an engineering assessment agreement with USI consulting, consultants. This is for Kenny Road 450 South from Concord Road to the Bella Vista Drive Lamplighter, basically Roberts and Concord Ridge subdivisions. Includes study of the intersection of 450 South and Concord. It's a not to exceed $146,000.
Mr. President, move for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes.
And our last item is the road vacate at Mercy Way. Doug?
Yeah, so I think for road vacation, you're required to hold a public hearing, and the public hearing has been advertised. My understanding is that the ordinance itself is not quite ready to go. Faith Properties was waiting to get some paperwork from some utilities that are involved. So I think the way to proceed would be to open the public hearing in case anybody came and wanted to give comment, and then continue the public hearing until September 3rd, when you can hear the ordinance. And if anybody has anything else to say at that time, they'd be welcome to do so.
Okay. So we will open the hearing for ordinance 2024-17-CM, and that is for the vacation of Mercy Way.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
It's good to see everyone. My name is Marianne Owen. I'm from Law Firm of Stewart &amp; Branigan. I'm here on behalf of Faith Properties. They are the petitioner in this matter for Mercy. We are requesting the vacation of Mercy Way, which runs right along the Faith Christian Church School and intersects with State Road 26. This way is, really intersects properties that are owned by Faith Properties. It provides access to Faith Properties. And over the years, Faith Properties has done the snow removal and generally taken care of this way. So this request is really just moving the handling of Mercy Way from the county to Faith Properties. And so that is the bulk of our request. What we have mentioned, what your counsel has mentioned, prior to this hearing, we have been approached not only by Center Point, who has added a easement to your ordinance, but we just have been approached by Duke Energy. And they would like to talk with us about further easements in regard to this matter. So trying to do that between Friday and Monday, not necessarily the easiest thing to do. So we request you hear us at the next meeting so we can take care of our matters with Duke and any other utilities that have similar issues. And I'm here to answer any questions you might have in regard to the current situation, as well as to try to answer any questions the public may have.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak to this matter? All right.
Mr. President, I move that we extend this hearing to our September 3rd meeting. Therefore, we will hear ordinance 2024-17-CM at that time.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. See you at the next meeting.
Thank you. All right. Ryan.
Good morning. Well, our agency has accumulated a lot of paper since 1965.
We have noticed that, yeah.
And to my knowledge, none of my predecessors really decided to kind of tackle the problem. And so my immediate predecessor sort of began the process internally, and we've been kind of doing what we can with our own scanner. But really, the full scope of it just, I think, requires a little bit more help. And so to that end, we have this agreement that's been, or contract that's been hammered out. I want to thank IT for assisting with this. But I think this will be a kind of one-and-done sort of effort. Once it's completed, we'll be able to scan as we go, as new paper comes in. And so we will not be accumulating quite nearly as much. And what we will be accumulating is needed. Yeah, we won't be tossing everything, but a lot of the old historic stuff, you know, can be scanned and thrown. And so that's the effort, and appreciate your support in this.
And this may be a Cindy question. I don't know if Cindy's in the room, but yeah. Is this, is this done onsite, or do they take it offsite and scan it?
It'll be picked up and taken offsite. Where they have large enough scanners to handle all the different types and sizes of maps, blueprints, you know. So basically, we'll be marking it for them so that they know what goes together, how to do what. And then they will be picking it up in a truck, taking it, and then they have people that, this is what they do, is scan this kind of stuff, and they'll be taking care of it from there.
And then a timeline?
Well, the timeline will basically be, they'll get it done as quickly as they can, just because they'll work at it steadily. But it'll basically depend on us. How much we can send them at a time? We'll send them, start with 150 rolls, and it'll, I, the big thing about that is, we just don't want to rush that office because we need everything marked correctly so it can be located in the future. Unfortunately, the only people that really know how to mark that so that area plan in the future will be able to access these records and find what they need on the historical stuff is them. So he has to pull staff out to basically give them an indicator of how they want these to come back and how we want to be able to locate them down the line, you know, in the future. So we can't just drop everything in the office for two weeks and mark everything. So as he gets them marked, they're willing to make as many trips as they need to, to come get. But I'm guessing it won't take them more than a few months to get them all done if we can get them marked. So it'll kind of be a slow, they'll pick up a load, then the information will get sent to me digitally on an FTP site for us to download, and then I'll download them, and then hopefully we'll be able to maybe run a few other jobs on them to make them more easily searchable. I'll work on that once we get a batch back. And they will, once I've verified that everything's good, we get an index list back of what they took, we know it's good, then they'll shred that paper. So we're going to kind of go slow so that we can make sure we don't lose anything and that everything gets done the way that they want it done, so that it's findable and locatable. So it may take a little longer than that. Some of that's going to be dependent on us.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, they indicated they can start as early as mid-September, and we actually are already in full triage mode down there. Kathy and Christina are kind of handling a lot of the current planning stuff, which is really the vast bulk of it. And then Tim Stroshine has already been up in the attic, clearing a lot of stuff out and trying to separate kind of the wheat from the chaff. There's some things that we have duplications of that we obviously don't need to scan. There's some items we just don't need to scan. There's some items that we want scanned but brought back, you know? And so we're, like I said, in full triage mode right now. And I think once we kind of get that first truckload out, we'll get into much more of a rhythm, and it'll probably move much, much quicker.
Cool. Great. Yeah, this is much needed.
Yes, thank you. It's going to free up a lot of elbow room down there.
Yeah.
And I look forward to having some discussions about a possible new public conference room carved out of our footprint that we probably won't need, so coming attractions.
Well, once you get all those cabinets out, you got room for a pickleball court.
We very well might. And I actually, I was chatting with the county recorder's office, and they said they are actually in need of some flat files, and so I'd be happy to have them hauled up there, and they can make use of them if they need to, so, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve the service agreement with information and records associates in the amount of $45,252.60.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. All right. Good morning, Sadie.
Good morning. The first item on the agenda for me is Paylocity FSA and Cobra Agreement. This is more on the legality end of things to implement the Cobra and FSA side of it. The other contract still stands. We just took a while to get them to agree to our additional terms and conditions.
Any questions?
If I understand, it's basically like $4 per employee is what this figure's showing or such?
Yep. It's not any different than it is what we do now. Cobra will charge the, if anyone enrolls in Cobra, the 2% admin fee, so that will cover that end of the cost. And the FSA basically negates itself because of the payroll tax savings, since it's a pre-tax side.
Mr. President, I move that we approve this contract with Paylocity FSA and Cobra Agreement.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? That motion passes. All right. Vacation policy.
So the long anticipated update to the vacation policy. The changes, the significant changes include, as of January 1st, 2025, we will front-load vacation days. We are not changing the amount of days that employees receive, with the exception that we have now outlined how many days regular part-time employees receive, and that's based on what their current accrual rate per check is and what they actually typically receive annually. So that is outlined in this policy. There is a transition plan and a rollover plan, so I will go through that for the knowledge of employees. So on January 1st, 2025, and every January 1st thereafter, employees will receive their annual vacation allotment. Employees are permitted to roll their 2024 banks into 2025 and 2026, so they essentially have to, the rest of '24, '25, and '26 to use up what is current and what they gain. Employees will have all of, I said that, sorry. Employees are permitted to carry over five days of vacation time into 2027 and every year thereafter. For '25 and every year thereafter, employees are permitted to roll vacation time into their sick banks for a new max allowance of 90 days. For example, Jane has 10 days left in her vacation bank at the end of '24. Jane elects to roll those 10 days into her sick bank, leaving her with a total of 76 days in her sick bank. As of January 1st, '25, Jane will continue to accrue sick time at one day per month. And requests for sick bank rollover, vacation rollover into sick bank can be made to the HR coordinator by December 20th each year.
And can, can that request be made at any time up to December 1st, or is it between December 1st and?
Preferably between December 1st and December 20th, because once it goes into the sick bank, we're not going to pull it back out in the event you changed your mind. So we would rather you wait so that you've planned appropriately, employees have.
And two things. One, are you communicating this via email to the entire staff?
Yes. All staff will receive this via email. It will also be posted into iSoft Employee Messages. And once Lexible has loaded all employees, then it will be pushed out for acknowledgement, that method as well.
Okay. And then thanks to you and to the committee that worked on this, we had a number of folks from different departments that came together and put some time and effort into this, and that's greatly appreciated.
Yeah, the collaborative approach was much appreciated.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve the vacation policy effective 1/1/25 as outlined by our HR director.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes.
My final item today is the 2025 holiday schedule. This includes all of our quote-unquote "normal" holidays that we approve each year and two floating holidays in lieu of the election days. We gave up personal day in 2024 for the two election days. Being that we don't have election days in '25, there will be two floating holidays. And those will be, there will be a bank in Paylocity for this so that employees can preschedule them, such as they do any other accrued time.
Mr. President, I move that we approve our 2025 holiday schedule as presented to us.
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Thank you. All right. Community corrections.
Yeah, we're going to, we are going to table that again. We have an issue with the dollar amount of the overall project requires that we, that that go out to bid. I checked, it does not have a QPA with the state of Indiana, but it looks like there may be another national agreement we may be able to do the same thing with. I'm waiting on some additional information.
All right. We'll move that to our September 3rd meeting then. All right. Next is the villa. Good morning, Deanna.
Good morning. I have two agreements today, both with Reeve Riley. The first one is the resurfacing of our paved area on our driveway now and widening the entrance to the, to the villa. And that's the first one. And the total of 66,275. And Doug's looked at these and?
Yeah, I was just going to mention, I think on the agenda, it's reversed the gravel lot projects up top and the front, I mean, it doesn't really matter. It's just, you said the first project, which you were talking about the front? No, 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 that's nothing to do with you. It's just how the agendas lead out.
Oh, okay. And then the other one we have is the gravel, which is where our parking area is. It goes around behind the building and down the back lot. That'll be surfaced, asphalt surfaced. And that total is $140,103.
And that includes the U?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
So everything will be surfaced when both projects are done.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. President, they went out and they got three different quotes on these two different projects. This was the lowest of the three quotes for both projects. So in saying that, I'll move that we approve the contract with Reeve and Riley for the gravel lot project at $140,103, and also for the front drive project, which was $66,275.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the contract with Reeve Riley for those two projects. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have an agreement for animal sheltering with the Humane Society for Greater Lafayette. This is an agreement that'll put in place from August 1st of 2024 through the end of the year for kenneling services and, I should say, sheltering services for county animals in the tune of $14,858 per month.
Mr. President, I'd move for approval, the sheltering agreement.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes.
Mr. President, I move that we hear ordinance number 2024-11-CM, amending the Teppe County Code, Chapter 90, Animal Control, for second reading.
Second.
All right. Do you want to give your synopsis again?
Sure. I don't know, we went through this before. I don't know how much their interest there is in the total outline, but generally speaking, we are amending our ordinance so that our ordinance and the two city ordinances are consistent specifically with things that sort of intersect with the new animal shelter. It changes, it modifies the definition of abandoned, attract the Lafayette definition, having to do with leaving in place without permission of the property owner. Mostly that's going to be a rental situation. Modifies the definition of at-large to include the concept that an animal isn't at-large if it's trained to respond to boys' commands and is on private property with the permission of the owner. Modifies the definition of owner so that one does not become an owner under the ordinance quite so quickly, not unless the person's caring for the animal for 10 days. Previously, this was three days. And during that timeframe, if the person notifies the ACO, the animal control officer, that an abandoned or stray animals around, they're not considered the owner because now the county knows about it. It requires a person takes possession of an abandoned or at-large animal to notify the animal control officer. It modifies notification requirements when we have a dog impounded to track what City Lafayette does, which is using information on a microchip, if any, communicating with the facility on a vaccination tag, and communicating through the shelter's webpage. As the shelter is a decision-maker with respect to whether an animal suffering from rabies, infectious disease, or debilitating condition has to be put down, allows the shelter to charge its regular impoundment fee on top of county-imposed fees, gives the owner five days, I think it was three days, to reclaim an animal that's been impounded. That's now consistent with what the cities are doing. Specifies that the animal control officer can condition reclamation on the owner entering into a hazardous animal agreement. Specifies that animal control officer, the shelter is authorized to perform the microchipping of an animal that's been the subject of an ordinance violation. It adds a community sec, community cat section, which basically allows the county or resident of the county to bring stray cats into the shelter, who can then be sterilized and then returned to where they were found. Updates the commercial sales chapter to specify that it doesn't apply to sales that are protected by state law. And it increases our fines to $250, which is what the cities have. That's up from generally $200.
Okay. Thank you, Doug. And obviously, the intent of this is to get the ordinances largely in line with both the cities of Lafayette and West Lafayette, as now there'll be, the animal sheltering will obviously be a common facility at the new, at the new facility that's about to be open. At this point, unless there's any questions, I'll entertain any public comment in regard to the second reading of the ordinance? Again, I'd like to say thank you to the group that worked on this for quite a while, and thank you to Sharon Dole, who's in the audience. We appreciate it.
Murtal?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
Ordinance 2024-11-CM passes 3 to 0 on second and final reading.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. President, I move we hear ordinance number 2024-18-CM, high-volume water export radial collector well moratorium in connection.
Second.
All right. Doug, if you want to?
Yeah, so this, you already have the moratorium in place for high-volume water exports and radial collector wells. In terms of substance, all this does is extend that moratorium to September 3rd, 2025. The whereas language is pretty similar to what you had in your initial ordinance. It just adds some language about what's transpired in the last eight months.
All right, I'll open this ordinance up to public comment.
My name is Liz Solberg, and I'm here on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Greater Lafayette. The League supports this ordinance to extend last year's ordinance for one year. We commend you for your, for continuing your moratorium on high-volume water exports and radical, radial, sorry, I got the right words here, radial collector wells for an additional year. The League also supports efforts to create a statewide water plan, which we hope will appropriately address the broader issue of water distribution and apportionment. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, we thank you again for taking action on this critically important issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Wow, I thought we'd have more public comment, but I, I'll just add that, you know, I, as was mentioned by the League, I mean, it, it is important that the state address this issue. And I know when we passed this the first time, we were hopeful that it would be done in the last session, and that was not done. So that's why, that's one of the reasons why it's important, I think, to extend this moratorium. And, you know, also, we've got, obviously, a change in administration in 2025. We've got, you know, the, the current study that's going on now. Obviously, that, that study, there's been, it's a night and day difference from the first study that we caught word of as that was being planned. There's been far more communication, and we're hopeful that we can, that as that plan, as that study results are released, and we have a third-party review of that, that, you know, it's much more comprehensive than that first study. But in the meantime, we've, at least I feel it's, it's important that we continue that moratorium.
Well, it woke a lot of legislators up. Farm Bureau has this as one of their top issues that they're going to be taking to the State House with us throughout the state. I think a statewide study needs to be done. We need to know exactly what the entire state has, what, where, how. So I think this really woke a lot of people up.
And we're not in this alone. This is going on in other states as well, especially out west for years. So it is going to be something that maybe we don't have to deal with immediately, but even if the project or the demand goes away, water is going to continue to be an issue when you have unprecedented growth in your continue to be an issue when you have unprecedented growth in your state. So, hopefully, as Dave said, it did wake some people up to doing, the possibility of doing something broader than we have with just the study that's underway now.
Okay. Thank you. Jennifer?
Brown?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
Murtal?
Yes.
Ordinance 2024-18-CM passes 3 to 0 on first reading.
And that will be heard on second reading at our September 3rd meeting, which is the Tuesday after Labor Day.
Okay. Next up, I believe we have a presentation from the Tepiqanue County Board of Health.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for listening to Brief Comments today, a specific recommendation, and we're available, of course, to answer any questions. Thank you, Mr. Von der Heid, for accompanying me to help answer any questions, and we appreciate the technical assistance in displaying the job description that the Board of Health recommends would be helpful. I'm Julie Anne Stout, I'm a physician here in Tepiqanue County, combined internal medicine and pediatrics, and this year I'm serving as the President of the Board of Health. We are embarking on a search for a new county health officer and making an official job description and pay recommendation. We've presented a lot of information about our peer counties that by and large have full-time physician health officers who are leading an interprofessional team. We've presented a lot of data about the Indiana public health and health rankings overall, which lag behind other states in the US, and also the Tepiqanue County Health Department funding, which lags behind our peer counties. We recommend a full-time physician health officer at a pay rate of $275,000. This position has historically been a part-time consulting-type position, especially with the Health First Indiana funding availability. We have a unique opportunity to move into a more modern approach to prevention and public health. I understand from our discussions with county government that county government plans to continue this position as a part-time consulting, visiting-type position, and we submit that the, if the, with the explanation that the time is not right, we submit that the time is measured in terms of infants who die and contribute to the fetal infant mortality rate, and those who die with overdose from substance-use disorder, usually complicated by mental health conditions, that contribute to those rates. So, we submit that the resources are here, the will is here, and we ask you to strongly consider our recommendation for the full-time health officer. Appreciate your time and happy to take any questions.
Do we want them to roll the position and get that on the screen?
Yes, it'd be great from our tech assistants to put the health officer job description up on the screen.
Can you let me know which slide that is?
Good luck, Jennifer. It was about the third one down, I thought, but...
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's not actually in the PowerPoint. I thought you had the word document with the job description, but maybe you don't. That's okay, yeah. Yeah, so I've stated the contents of the Board of Health recommendation for the full-time county health officer physician position.
Has much discussion been going on with the current Director of the Health Department, Stacy? I mean, has she been involved on looking at this job description and putting things together? I'm just curious.
Yeah, I have discussed with Stacy. She's remained neutral in her comments to me about any hopes or wishes she has for a future direction with the health officer. She's remained neutral. Thank you for asking.
And when this, when a full-time job description was being worked on, obviously, the health officer's at that time was at Community Corrections, and that is no longer the case, and likely won't be the case in the future. What, what, what's the difference now in that job description, that full-time job description?
Right, so in terms of the actual, you know, statements of the job description, it is quite broad. It encourages a new health officer to obviously develop their own vision for how they will support both the environmental services, existing clinical services, and expand clinical services to provide a safety net for the community, and also then to build a way for the Health Department to become more self-sustaining, and not just depend long-term on just these two years of Health First Indiana funds, or this given rate of county appropriations for public health spending. Thank you.
And how, you know, you know, obviously, that's a very good point, and one of my real concerns about making this a full-time position at the rate of $275,000, because this would be funded through the, you know, the HFI grant. We're in year one, and again, we have a new administration coming in. We have no assurances this funding will continue, hopefully it will, but we have no assurances to that. It seems, you know, my concern is we could be utilizing this money and getting it out to providers who are currently providing the same services you're talking about, likely much cheaper, because they have, they are already providing those services and need these additional resources to expand services to others. I don't see at this point that it's financially wise of us to create basically a new community clinic when we have two hospital systems, two FQHC systems out there. We have mental health providers who are out there, our partner agencies are doing superb jobs providing services in the community, but they lack the resources to expand those services. And now, with the Health First Indiana funds, we have the ability to help them by just partnering and collaborating like we do in this community, and I think this kind of goes against that. Now, down the road, you know, maybe, you know, if we're three or four years, you know, of secured funding through this, and we need to look at doing things differently, if there's areas of public health that aren't being met by partners within the community, and we need to expand those, that's obviously, you know, something we could look at, but it doesn't seem like that this is the right time to be doing that.
Right, I hear your viewpoint. I would disagree that this plan excludes collaboration with community partners. I think community partners is an essential part of the plan. You know, the safety net need always exists. All of our partners do have different barriers, which none of us fully understand. They're their business models for why they at times have difficulty meeting needs. Of course, that's natural. So, the safety net continues to, safety net need continues to exist.
And it would still continue to exist with a full-time health officer, because a full-time health officer could not possibly meet the need of that full safety net within the community.
I would say that our, most of our peer counties would disagree with you, as they have full-time health officers that are leading interprofessional teams. So, respectfully, you know, I would state that we have had many of our health partners working for years. We continue to have needs. You know, the saying is, the best time to plant a tree was 20 years ago, but the next best time is today. And so, we've been doing things the same way for a long time. I agree with you, we have a new opportunity with funding, and so using a new model to really strengthen those clinical services.
I disagree that we are, that this is a, that we've been doing things the same way, because we haven't been, in the sense that we don't have access to this funding in the past.
Right, I agree. And in addition to cost, I would just emphasize return on investment as a principle to really address. Yes, there's going to be cost to any of these models that you're talking about and that I'm talking about. And again, our seven-member Board of Health with deep expertise and experience in healthcare, the provision of care and the business of care, have arrived at consensus opinion that the time is now for the full-time physician health officer.
Yeah, because I would assume that, you know, if you're, if you're using the partner agencies that are already, that already have the expertise in this, as this grant money is being awarded to them, you're going to be setting metrics and expecting outcomes that will be reported back to the Board of Health to make sure that they're meeting the criteria that you're, that is expected of them. So, in other words, it's, it's, that seems to be a much more viable model for this.
There are lots of opinions, right? Ask six different people, you get six different opinions. And as the Board of Health, we appreciate the opportunity to present our professional recommendation to county government today.
I've spent a lot of time listening in the last six months, and thank you for your gracious use of your time, and phone, long phone calls and meetings and everything, and to you as well, Randy. The, this was on my mind and my heart a lot this past weekend, because I knew it was coming, it was that we were going to be talking about this today. And one of the, one of the things, and I do understand where Commissioner Murtal is coming from, I will say that I think we all know that we have to expect more out of our Health Department with this opportunity, and ultimately, expect more from the person who leads that effort, our county health officer. Whether or not that person ends up being physician to the county, I do have some concerns about that. And it isn't, it's kind of a different concern. It has to do with redundancy, and this is based on experience of what we just went through in the recent months, and I'm not a look-back guy, but what I do know is that if we wrap the needs, and they are, they are real needs today, and there's been some wonderful work done, but if we wrap the needs of those people around one person, and that person has a change of heart, they are ready to retire or something like that, then that means we're then stuck, where we've got to find another person that's willing to take on that role and that responsibility. And at 7:00 last night, I was just, after, after just pondering it all weekend, I am just absolutely convinced that it's not, it's not a one-person job, and I don't know where that, I don't know where that leaves us ultimately, but I think if we want to do what's right for the people that are receiving the services, if we're going to expand these services, it has to be done in a, in a way that when that person, our county health officer, leaves, I'm not, I'm not dealing with a phone call at 3:00 in the morning to make sure that our inmates at Community Corrections get their meds at 7:00 or whenever they were due to get it. And that, and that makes me nervous. And again, I look at my, my previous experience prior to putting the commissioner hat on, and virtually every important service had redundancy involved. If the radio system goes down, there's a backup. You know, if this person's out of town, you've got somebody else that can, that can fit in, and I'm worried about what happens if we wrap all these services up and lay them on the doorstep of one person. It is, I believe it is sure to fail without some really, really good work and support around it, so.
If I could respond, Commissioner Brown, I really appreciate your, your thoughts and your sharing your thoughts about that. I would submit that the idea of a full-time county health officer is the physician leading an interprofessional team, and that exactly the, that person's, part of that person's job is to develop a system that makes them redundant, frankly, right? That, that's hopefully all of our jobs in our work is to develop the other individuals around us and the systems around us, given enough time and enough support from those systems that are put in place to support us to make that happen. And so, I do encourage us to move forward into the future with a different mindset. Yes, history is important, and look at also some of the results that we've seen in terms of the metrics and the statistics that we've experienced in the last couple of years. So, to me, again, a visiting consulting sort of position, it makes it a very difficult proposition to provide the kind of visionary leadership, education, and growth mindset in that workplace, to fully develop all those folks in the Health Department to work at the top of their license, and really innovate and think about the future. So, I understand what you're saying. I guess I'm hearing a little bit from you, this vision of like, oh, we're just putting all this money into one person, and what happens when they leave? And I would just encourage us to really look at, how does the process support that health officer to then develop and support the rest of the Health Department personnel? It's a challenge when we are not entering into this position with a Health Department, health officer position description that has gone through the entire county government process, and sitting there ready to go. You know, it's 2024. It's sort of a surprise that we don't have that.
Any other comments?
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there any other comments on that?
Sadie, the current job description as a part-time, is it sitting there, been looked over, gone through?
There is not record of a current job description. The past three health officers have not signed a formal job description, did not exist within any records I have. We found a very old one from, I believe, 2013, semi-relative. We've gone through multiple drafts of a job description. There was one written by two members of the Health Department this last summer, spring. We submitted that one to WIS, came back with a classification of SO and a salary recommendation. Then we've tweaked that, I can't even tell you how many times since then, as late as Friday afternoon, we've altered that one again.
And that, that, and that's a part-time position, and, and that, will, will that need to go back to Wagner or Ronechili, or what's your thoughts on that?
Based on that we changed the verbiage on some of the job requirements, I would say that we need to send it back just to ensure that the salary recommendation, it will likely come back still classed as an SO based on, it's a physician, but to see that the salary recommendation of $69,000 and a change is still accurate.
Okay.
And we can't, obviously, we can't even post the position without a, without a job description.
Correct.
And, and the hang-up right now is on the, the issue of full-time versus part-time.
Yes.
And we are, we are where we need to be on the job description. Everybody can agree with that, with the exception of that issue.
Correct, yes.
Well, Mr. President, until we really have an official, official job description, and also it's sent through the Personnel Committee, I don't think there's really much we can do right at this moment, is there? Or Doug, your opinion or whatever?
I, it's up, I mean, it's up to you, I think. My understa, correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is that the part-time positions aren't something you necessarily create formally here. So, if you're going to leave it there, I don't know that you need to take formal action. If we're waiting to see whether we should do anything else, based on the full-time versus part-time decision, you know, you might give your Human Resources Director some direction on what your decision is there, but it, it's not something that needs to take place as part of a motion, but certainly can. There's my two hands.
You're good, Doug.
Yeah.
And it really isn't about the hours, what, what it gets down to is, it's about setting a salary, right?
Oh, I think it's technically both.
And work expectations?
Yeah.
So, being that the current health officer's resigned, or maybe still working somewhere or whatever, could we give direction for Katie, or Sadie, sorry, to go ahead and post the current job description as part-time?
Yes, in all technicality, the Personnel Committee does not hear part-time positions. Part-time position job descriptions are, they can sign the full-time, like a part-time jail deputy. They can sign the full-time description, but they don't, there's not a hearing process. Departments get a part-time budget, and it is what it is. The uniqueness of this is that it's not an hourly or a non-exempt part-time position. It's an exempt position, and the salary is where it is. That's why it's been unique. But it's my understanding that the Board and Commissioners and HR agree on the part-time job description. job description.
So, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion, move for our HR department to go ahead and post the current part-time position of our health officer.
Second.
Okay.
And in the meantime, we can work to get potentially to maybe a full-time or such.
The, so we have a motion and a second to have Sadie post the position as part-time. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion passes. Thank you. All right. Grants. Morning.
This morning, I'd like to ask permission to accept grants from the prosecutor, for the prosecutor, an amount of $453,384.96 from the ICJI funds, VOCO Victims of Crime Act, for the continuation of their current program here in Tippecanoe County, and there is a 20% match on these.
Mr. President, I move with grant permission to accept as stated.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that passes.
Then the CASA has the same grant in the amount of $416,464.21 for the, again, the VOCA, VOCA funds that support the CASA program here in Tippecanoe County.
Mr. President, I'd move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Unfinished business.
Yes, I had one item I just wanted to ask for or make a clarification from the last meeting. There was a motion and vote to approve the probation officer's initial salary from a new hire to a P3, I believe is what was said. And I, when I presented the cost estimates to you, I had a typo, and that should have been a zero to two. And so, I just wanted to clarify that what you were wanting to approve was essentially what probation asked for, to go from zero to two years rather than zero to three years longevity. I was approached after the meeting and thought I needed to clarify that for the minutes.
Okay.
If, if that is in fact what you were intending to do with your motion.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the correction as stated by the order.
Second.
Okay, if that's fine, okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that passes. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Any other unfinished or new business? Okay, reports on file. We have a report from Central Mail, accounts payable and duplications from the clerk of the Circuit Court, from the coroner's office, from Rural Transportation, their quarterly report, Tippecanoe County Public Library, and the Tippecanoe County Treasurer. And those will be on file in the Commissioner's Office. Is there any public comment?
Good morning.
Hey, good morning. I'm Monica Casanova. I'm speaking as a community member and as a trustee. I heard the discussion about the public health officer. I understand a decision has been made to make it a part-time position, but I would encourage you to make that investment in our, in our community and make it a full-time position in the future. I think it's a worthwhile investment. We've seen the outcome of having someone that was technically part-time but spent a lot of time. We saw a reduction in opioid deaths. I think the high rate of infant and maternal mortality rates are very concerning for this community, and we should be able to tackle them. So, I just wanted to, to share those comments and that feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Lindsay Mputupule. I am the Executive Director of Transform Birth Services, and I also kind of want to back up what Monica spoke about, about continuing to have discussions and talking about creating a full-time position as a nonprofit who has been created to address maternal health disparities in Tippecanoe County. The health department has really backed us up and supported us and enabled us to do the boots-on-the-ground work that we do in our community, and they have come at a place of empowering us, and I don't think that that will stop for mental health and substance use in our county, should this be a full-time position. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Pauline Shen, and I am a former employee of the health department. I'm an epidemiologist, and I was a community outreach person. I first want to say thank you for your consideration and listening to people's comments. I am in favor of a full-time position for the health officer, and the reason is because I've been all over the state. I'm proud to say I was born and raised in this county. It's been an honor and a privilege, but I don't see our, I really see all around me that this county is growing very fast. As I understand, one of the fastest counties in the state of Indiana. We advertise ourselves as a Research One institution in Purdue University. We have Purdue Discovery Park. I noticed that we are building childcare facilities, and we're trying to bring people in, not just from the state, but from all over the nation. And so, with that comes a lot of growing pains. And so, I understand your, I, I guess your support of, of being a little worried about the wraparound services with one person, Commissioner Brown, and I understand what you have to say, Tom Murtaugh, about how we've done it in the past. But I really think that we would like to be proactive as opposed to reactive. And the reason is, I mean, if all of us would know, right? Because we're in a time of different things after post-COVID with the global pandemic. I mean, Purdue University has more international students. They rank at least eighth in the nation, right? I mean, not, not in the state. So, we have 50,000 students, and we have a huge influx. This is a 27, let's see, 365, 24/7 job, but I don't think it can be done by one person, absolutely not. But what I do see is a huge team, a strong, effective team that works with partnerships, right? With, I wish Jennifer Layton was here today to speak about mental health, right? And the people from Sycamore Springs and every, and Valley Oaks, right? I mean, the waiting list to get into some of those places like the Rigs FQHC can be three or four months. And for somebody who has a mental health problem, that's really serious because a lot of times, I mean, you've been in law enforcement, those sorts of issues can be very dangerous to other people and to themselves. So, I think that the evidence base shows that Indiana sadly is ranked 40th out of 50 in the nation in public health, right? And we are better, I think we're in the top half out of the 92 counties in the state of Indiana, but there's a lot of room. And because we're growing so fast, I think that a full-time health officer position would really show that we are moving forward, right? We want to welcome people to our county. We want to grow, and we need to provide the public health services, right, to make sure that everybody, including the 50,000 students and the other 180,000 residents that live here, are able to be safe. And so, I'm really in favor of a pub, a public health, full-time health officer. So, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Are you supposed to, are you supposed to sign this thing?
Yes.
Please. All right.
My name is, my name is Colin Turley. I live at 424. I support a, I support a full-time health officer. I, I have at points taken value from some of Dr. Lewis's team's expertise. I have actually, I actually go weekly to the, to the Recovery Cafe, which is, which got its new location because of his team and because his team understands its community, and that is not something that I believe a outside team would be able to do. Our county faces like very complex issues, especially in our correctional facilities, things like drug deaths, pandemic response, and things like sexual health. And I don't believe that outside sources are the solution. Dr. Lewis has even provided options that don't affect taxpayers so much. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Lindsay, did you sign in?
I am a resident of Lafayette, and I'm here on behalf of Indiana Task Force. We would like to echo a lot of the sentiments that were shared earlier. We believe that a full-time health officer is absolutely important to facing some of the complex needs that our community have, has in terms of infant mortality, drugs, drug deaths, sexual health, and pandemic response. And our community, as was discussed earlier, is rapidly expanding. This is not a part-time role. This cannot be given to outside contractors. This is a full-time role, and it's important that we take care of our most vulnerable residents by, with some really, really strong leadership. I, you know, I don't think it's something worth delaying, and I'm not sure when the time would be, if not now. I think we do have some really pressing issues, and there have, we haven't had fully comprehensive health in this county. Yeah, we're only rated half out of all of the counties, and there's really a lot of growth that we can do here with some really strong leadership. It doesn't mean abandoning providers, and it doesn't mean, yeah, a singular person working on their own. It's really about leadership and strengthening our county as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jan Walker. I'm speaking as a community member living in West Lafayette and a retired physician. And I'd like to stress the importance of a full-time county health officer as a resource for physicians. The importance of having someone always available to consult with regarding things that have public health implications is very important, and that's basically all I have to say on the subject.
Thank you.
I'll adjourn.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.